Tuesday, November nineteenth at ten oh one. And there are no bid openings for today. So we're going to start with Heather Layman. Approve accounts payable cash requirements through November twenty seventh, two thousand and nineteen for payment on November twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, for the amount of one million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred, or four hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-five cents.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Would you like me to read down the percentages?
Yes.
For this check run, the total grants totals two hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which makes up eighteen point nine percent. Pass through is five hundred and three thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which makes up forty-two point three percent. And then for the escrow fund, that total is one hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and that's twelve point eight percent. RMS makes up sixty-seven thousand, seven dollars, which is only five point six percent. And then the county is two hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars, and that's twenty point four percent.
The pass-through that you had mentioned is all going to children and youth.
Yes.
And in the escrow area, ninety, probably ninety-five percent of the money is going to the visitor's bureau. It's the hotel tax pass through. Any comments, questions, suggestions? From either of my colleagues, if not, I'll take the motion.
I'm moving.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
We're also asking for approval upon review for next week's check run dated for November twenty-seventh, since there will be no meetings.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve that. As long as we have the opportunity to see it as it goes.
Yes. Yep, we will still do the same cash requirement report for you guys.
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You'll make sure that we get a copy of that.
Yep, Charlene will send that on Monday for you guys.
Thank you.
Roxanne Greco. Good morning Commissioners. As an update to our TDA and totals report, on Thursday, we'll request the addition of four part-time central processing officers in the DA Central Processing Department. And also at the Department of Public Safety and Communications, the changing of the pay grade of full-time addressing coordinator, GIS specialist from six, seven to seven, eight. We'll also have a salary board action for changing the salary schedule for the same two items. And then moving on to personnel actions, we will be requesting one full-time replacement and one half-time replacement.
Thank you.
Okay.
Director Yorke from RMS. You actually have six items here.
Good morning Commissioners. First is the two thousand and twenty RMS fee schedule. There's no proposed fee increases of any sort. The only thing is, the addition is we're adding a price of twenty-five dollars per truckload of filled dirt that if somebody wants to bring us soil, we're going to charge twenty-five dollars a load. But other than that, everything else stays the same.
Jason, was the, did we have an, did we have an increase last year?
We had an increase at the minimal tipping for the
Transfer station?
Well, both, transfers, we made them twenty dollars each at the landfill on the transfer station.
And do you recall what kind of increase that was at the time?
Well, it was fifteen and twenty, so it was a five dollar increase there. And I think one was thirteen and one was fifteen, Commissioner. I apologize, I don't remember.
Well, that third used to be thirteen, now it went to twenty.
So the landfill, yeah, both are, both are twenty for minimal loads.
Thank you.
Next, I have Amendment Number One, a three-year, it's a three-year extension with no increase for bottled water with Topo Hawk and Mountain Spring Water. Next, I have Amendment Number Three with Montango, which would be a one-year extension with no price increase without agreement. Then we went out to bid for oils and greases, as you know. We opened the bid by two weeks ago, Commissioner. This is, the award is Petro Choice Holdings for as-needed basis for all the lubrication products that we use. The list is pretty extensive, excuse me, at RMS that we have. So that'll be as-needed.
Jason, just on the Montango, that was for
Tire recycling.
Tire recycling.
Here we go. Approved purchase during core main for HD pipe. So we went out to bid for HD pipe and the accessories to go with it that we will use in the future at the landfill cells and throughout the facility for gas collection, leachate, whatever. We use a significant amount of HDP pipe. The pipe purchases with core main for twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. They were the lowest bidder. And for the accessories, for landfill gas well accessories that go with the pipe was to QED Environmental Systems in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-five cents.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Austin Daly, two thousand and nineteen Fair, City of Williamsport Subrecipient Agreement.
Good morning Commissioners. Thursday I'll have for you for approval. It's a two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fair agreement between the county and the city of Williamsport in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. It's for the Park Avenue Neighborhood Rental Rehab Program. That program will allow for property owners to receive a zero percent, ten-year deferred forgiveness grant to do rental rehab and renovations of units occupied by lower and moderate income family or tenants. The property owners who participate will provide fifteen percent match on the first. They're also required to keep the units at or below fair market rent for the duration of that grant. And then the work eligible for the program is similar to the Homes in Need Program, so it's code compliance, accessibility, weatherization, things of that nature. It's similar to what the city did in the Road Art Neighborhood for their rental repairs. They did twenty-three units in eleven buildings for the White Road Art.
Okay. Let's see, you said it's a deferred?
Yeah.
Is there a payback schedule, or do the land, or the homeowners or the landlords are forgiven?
It, it sounds like if they, you know, make all the payments over the term of that ten-year grant, they're forgiven on the interest. Yeah, I mean, they're still, they're, they have to put the fifteen percent upfront.
And the, and there's income requirements on the people that are living in?
Yeah, thirty percent of the funds have to be expended on households. Less than fifty percent of the area median income, which is like, for this fair grant cycle, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
And I assume that the county is responsible for tracking this on?
So they'll have to report to, the property owners will report to the city once a year, and then the city reports to us twice a year.
This is for rental or owner occupied, right?
It, it's targeted for like rentals, so like people who own like rental units. It's targeted for rentals, yeah.
Thank you, Austin.
Yep, thank you.
Next, we have Stephanie Trivel, the DNA Diagnostic Center Incorporated.
Good morning Commissioners. This is an extension of the Pennsylvania Borough Child Support Enforcement Office's existing contract with DNA Diagnostic Centers. This contract would be extended through January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty. And essentially, this contract mandates that all domestic relation offices utilize the same genetic testing lab, that we perform the same sampling techniques and charge consistently.
So why, why'd you only take it out to two thousand and twenty? I mean, it's just January of two thousand and twenty, right? You don't need it after that, or?
The state will need it after that. I believe that they're opening up for another bid, but they've only extended it Yeah, it's just how the state contracts.
Yeah, okay, so the state is really the one that's saying, hey?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So I assume probably at some point in January, we'll receive notice of a new contract, whether it be through DDC or another genetic testing lab.
Thank you.
Jenny Fatianna, Armstrong Township, assignment agreement of sale.
Could I do them both?
Yes.
All right, good morning Commissioners. I have two assignment agreements that I'll present to you on Thursday. First is the assignment agreement for the Comets property, and the second is for the Rakestraw property. Both are for the Silver Bell Conservation Project in Armstrong Township. The Comets property assignment agreement would assign the county's purchase agreement to Armstrong Township, and so would the Rakestraw one. The purchase price for the Comets property is one million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for two hundred and twenty-five acres approximately. And the Rakestraw purchase price, it's actually a land swap, so we're swapping farmland from the Comets property after Armstrong Township purchases that for wetlands on the Comets, on that Mr. Rakestraw.
And roughly, what's the size of the swamp?
Yes, it is about thirty-six acres of farmland for approximately thirty-nine acres of wetlands. It's proportional because farmland is worth a little bit more than wetland acres. And both of these agreements were passed and approved by Armstrong Township at the township meeting last week. So this is the final action for consideration and approval.
What was the cost again on the swamp with Comets and the acreage?
The Comets property was one million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand. And we're purchasing that, the Comets property with grant funds. With grant fund, with county funds of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, Penn Best funds of six hundred thousand, and DCNR funds of five hundred and fourteen thousand. And so we're, Armstrong Township will be purchasing that property first, and then it's a back-to-back closing where we're swapping out the portion of, the wetland portion that Rakestraw owns for the agricultural portion of the Comets property.
Wait, what was the total acreage on the Comets?
It is thirty-six acres of, oh, it's two hundred and twenty-five acres.
Two hundred and twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah, approximately.
And then we're getting thirty-nine, giving up thirty-six. Thank you, Jenny.
Maya Toon, two items.
Good morning Commissioners. The first one is for psychological services for the public defender's office. It's for them to provide psychological evaluations on a need, on an assisted basis for their department for upcoming cases. And then the next item is there's different lots of surplus property that we are going to sell that's in excess of a thousand dollars. Some will be scrapped and others will be auctioned off.
Maya, I can, the, I want to back up one. Psychological services, what department is that for?
Public Defender. And all of those vehicles are there, major, major problems with the vehicles. More expense associated than it's worth keeping. It's just one problem after another. So.
Low mileage, relatively low mileage.
Well, the problem is, it's low because you can't run it because there's always a problem with the vehicle. Honestly, that has been the problem. And it's just too costly, like right now, they won't even pass inspection. They refuse to pass inspection unless we dump at least five grand into some of them. For me, it doesn't make sense to do that when it's part of the mobile rotation schedule to get these vehicles out. And once problems like that start occurring, more start happening. And that has proven to be the case because we fix it one time and now we come back with a magnitude of problems.
But the age of them, it's seventeen, seventeen years, eleven years, twelve years, seventeen years. Thank you.
Rodney Moore Hart.
Good morning Commissioners. I have two sales agreements for merchant credits. First is between us and PA American Water. That one's for eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty-one credits at three dollars per credit. And the second one is with the city of Lancaster and county of Lycoming. They're going to buy our, our regenny credits at four dollars per credit. And that's a, should be a total of seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight credits.
How many?
Seventy-five, seventy-eight.
Will they take, is this, are both of these from the ones we acted on, I think, last week?
Yeah, the credit generated by those, by those participants will be sold to these.
Okay, so will they take the money combined from both of these and divide it equally per agent to those that were involved? Or do the people in the Lancaster deal get? You know, how do you determine what makes up the Lancaster credits? If that's the way, if that's the way it works?
I just have to assign a generator to the credits for each sale. So I try to get them so they match up if they can, so I don't have to split, do two forms for someone. But as far as the money coming in, we take it all and then divide it by the number of credits sold.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering.
I wasn't sure what you're on.
That's, that's better. Thank you. Are there any administrative fees to that, to treat credit?
We have, we have a fee for the generators. It's like an insurance pool where the in-county, we take twenty-five percent just in case we have to purchase credits based on credits that were supposed to be there, but due to an act of God, like a flood or something, those BMPs got, best management practices got washed away. Before on the hook for them, you got lines. So in-county's twenty-five percent. We have three participants outside the county, we keep thirty percent.
Next, we're going to move on to informational items with Beth Johnson.
We just want to let everybody know, especially since the first outreach is tonight. We have a preliminary budget summary for the public to review. There's three outreach meetings scheduled. One tonight at Old Montgomery Township Fire Hall. One tomorrow night at Petrel Rock's Fire Hall. And then Thursday night is here in this Commissioner's courtroom. I wanted to let the department heads know that we did have to cut off Friday so that we can get the booklets printed. So anything we've gotten, or emails for additional items, we're keeping them in a folder, we're going to add them after the doc. But I wanted to let the public know that there's going to be hard copies available to review in the Commissioner's office, the Controller's office, fiscal office, and one at James V. Brown Library. And I didn't know if you wanted to talk about OpenGov at all or not, as far as online.
Let's do it, let's do it, you can talk about it. Tell them, they can access from their home. They don't have to wait. Everybody can be an armchair Commissioner now and sit at home, get that mouse going, open the budget, drill down. I mean, it'll be fun. Just what you want to do.
Yes, we have a new platform for our budget. It's called OpenGov. It's online and it's live right now. So like Commissioner said, we can go in and you can drill down on departments or count numbers or so it's very, very, they'll show you graphs. It's very, it's pretty awesome actually. The reports you can get out of there and the information you can get out of there is excellent. And this all goes towards the Commissioners wanting to be more transparent.
And you go to lyco.org, and on lyco.org, you go to interactive portal. I went to it last night and It's right on the front page right now. Right, it's right on the front page. You click on that, right? And that takes you to the budget. And then, as you said, you can go through different parts of the budget in a way that's probably more in-depth than the paper you get.
Yes.
Right, because you can actually do comparisons and see changes in growth and stuff.
And there'll be options on the left side, there'll be options on the right side, to whatever kind of, it'll bring up bar graphs, it'll bring up
As a five-year, five-year history.
Yes.
Right.
As a five-year history of actuals.
And it's going to be updated every month with real-time numbers. So you'll be able to go and each month, you'll get real-time numbers about what's being spent. Yeah, I think historically, at least what we've seen in the last four years, when we do these public meetings, you know, we might get five or six local residents to the area that we're doing the meeting. And I thought, you know, geez, you know, this, this could be something that the future board might be able to have a, like a call-in town hall where people can sit at home, bring it up on the screen, call into a number, and almost like a webinar, I guess, that, you know, you could just stay here and the people from the county could call and bring it up on home and you could go through it, that you might get more participation, I don't know. But I think it's, it should be interesting. It'll be fun to see what the response is from taxpayers going in and looking at it.
And at these three meetings, there's going to be a small presentation on how to use it and get around it.
You raise a good point. Actually, when, you'll notice in the paper that Senator Yaw is doing a town hall by phone. I had done them when I was in the legislature also. And sometimes you'd get, you know, three or four thousand people on the phone. So if they can actually be on the phone and at the same time be looking at the numbers, you actually make a good point, they may. Or the fact that they can look at the numbers ahead of time may stimulate some interest in them coming out to a meeting. Because now they'll, they might come out with some questions and
And thanks to Director McDermott and I S., and Brandy. Yes, for getting it ready so quickly. I'm surprised that we got it done on time. I think everyone was making it a priority and we got through.
Considering, yeah, considering that the order was given to OpenGov early in October, I didn't think they could do it. But, but they made the comments yesterday on the phone that the staff and everybody on the county side was so helpful and so professional that it really made their job a lot easier. So that's nice. Thank you.
Sorry, the meetings are six-thirty to seven-thirty, which are next week.
Thank you, Bill.
The next informational item, Maya Toon, bids for vertical tillage discs.
This is a bid for the farm. This is part of their capital budget.
Is this going to fall in two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty?
I told him it's likely going to be a carryover unless they can just pull it off a lot, if they have one. But I did tell him to prepare to roll over. I don't know if he contacted fiscal on that or not, but I did tell him that.
Was it, was it a, is it a capital budget item?
Yep. I think if I remember correctly, I think we have thirty grand for that.
Who's supposed to contact me?
Larry Beach. For his capital item, he has this year in the budget.
And then lastly, just for information, on Thursday, so this pin's will be awarded to Nikki Bresford, Michelle McDermott, Rhonda Boldle, and John Yingling.
Thank you. Any Commissioner's comment?
Yeah, today in the paper, editorial, had to deal with minimum wage and there was going to be a vote on that on Thursday. And so I contacted our three legislators and asked them for their opinions. Have they really studied it? Do they understand how many small businesses between five and fifteen employees, how they will be affected? Did they look at, is, if, you know, most, most companies, they say it's only two percent of the businesses out there that don't pay higher than the minimum wage. And the majority of the people that are making it are between the ages of sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen years of age. My biggest concern, according to the article, is that it's going to take it up to nine dollars and fifty cents. And then looking at Governor's Wolf's proposal to two thousand and twenty-five, they're going to try to get it up to fifteen. And how will this affect welfare recipients to work minimum wage jobs and still qualify for welfare? Human services, I'll say that politically correct, but still qualify then. If you raise it up another two dollars, does, does that affect their benefits? And trust me, I believe they should be able to make money and have a declining scale of benefits versus having them severed all at once. Representative Wieland gave me some good information today and, and he, they believe that this will really slow down the economy. It, it will have a negative impact on our community, especially since we have a medium income, household income of fifty thousand dollars. And that's not very high. And we're not, we're not living where our assessed values of our properties are high and we have a lot of appreciation. We don't have a lot of job growth. This is, this could be very devastating to rural America or rural Pennsylvania. And they really believe that it will hurt the Trump economy. So I, I urge that we get in touch with our legislators one way or another, but let them know how you feel. I think it's very important, especially if they're going to make that decision this, this Thursday, according to the editorial.
Go to public comment?
That's me. Before I read what I gave you all a copy of, one, I agree. I believe that it should not go up. I personally work a minimum wage, part-time job more just for something to do than the money, obviously. But I, you know, if they raise it, I honestly can see my job being automated out of existence. And so, you know, 58-year-old person that just enjoys doing something, I have to do something, I'd have one of those jobs that would go away, especially they raise it to $15 an hour. A second thing is he is talking about the credits. And he said that PA American Water was paying $3 a credit, whereas Lancaster was paying $4 a credit. Can we sell all our credits for $4 a credit? Maybe somebody wants to buy them for $5. Do I hear $6? $6, $6. That's how it works. You know? You know, because I don't know. It just sounds like more money that I don't have to give to the government if we get more money for them credits. Now, to the reason I came and just kind of let you all know why I come on to... Came today. Normally, my daughter's tutor comes on Tuesdays and Thursdays, 10 to 12:30. But she also works for the court and got called in today. So, I could come and see you all if y'all want to show you my smiling face. The rain tax. The rain tax or fee, as someone wants to call it, that's semantic so that nonprofits also have to pay it. I prefer to call it a tax. Why? Like taxes, if I don't pay them, the government will legally take my property and sell it to pay the taxes owed. Now, it may be an agent, agency, or authority authorized by the government, but the end result will be the same. A court will rule that my property is to be seized by any means necessary up to and including the use of deadly force and sold to pay those taxes owed. Now, unlike a tax, it is not based in property value, which is eminently unfair to those of us with lower-value properties. Plus, we, the people, don't have the opportunity to vote out the office of the people raising these taxes or these fees, I'm sorry. Yeah, let me see y'all raise everyone's taxes before the election. I dare you. I double-dog dare you. So, why do I say it's unfair? The newspaper reported that South Williamsport and DeBoistown are looking at an average fee of $15 a month or $180 a year. That doesn't sound so bad, does it? My house is assessed at $50,000. The average house in Lycoming County is about $150,000. Now, that's assuming the same $180 on each house. What are your houses assessed at? And that's the rub. $180 a year on your house is a lot less than $180 on mine. Now, let me break down some truths for you and the public. In the city of Williamsport, we pay 15 mils of property tax now. And it's been reported that in the three-year plan already includes another 1 to 2 mil tax increase to maintain the status quo. No extras. And earlier this year, the Sun Gazette reported that Williamsport already pays the highest total property taxes in Lycoming County, a total of approximately 35 mils. Add that 2 mils plus the effective increase of $180 a year on my modest home, now it's getting up there. But wait, it gets better. The levy and the MS4 unfunded mandates add $40 million in the next five years. And then, what about the $10 million for Graffias Run? That's 50 million. Elected officials try to say, just finance it over time. But that assumes no more unfunded mandates than putting some money aside for future repairs, maintenance, et cetera. Divide that $50 million over 10 years or $5 million a year. That's a cool 6 mils a year, plus the 2 mils factored in, plus, plus, plus. Pretty soon, Williamsport is a distressed city by state definition. And most of us that don't have six-figure salaries are unfairly squeezed. I guess people like me should never dream the American dream of owning a house. I also did some other calculations that I don't have in yours. $50 million at 3% interest is $1.5 million a year or 2 mil just in interest to the city. And another 2 mil for the principal over 30 years. Yeah, let me see y'all raise city taxes by 6 mils a year. That's 40%.
Question for you. Are you going to read this at the council meeting as well?
I certainly hope to because, you know, they need to hear it too. But, you know, this is something that, you know, it's countywide, it's statewide, and, you know, y'all also do represent me in the city. And I want everybody, all of my elected officials, to go to DC, to go to Harrisburg, to go across the street to Representative Wieland's office and point out that some of us, you know, I mean, I want to be able to own a house. But if I get taxed off of it, where do I go? Where do I go? And, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to make people that have done better in life than me feel bad or anything because it's not their fault either. But for me, working my little minimum wage, part-time job to come up with $180 and for any one of the other people in this room to come up with $180 is very different. You know, how about we break it down to how many hours you work? You know?
Scott, I couldn't agree with you more. You know, I think that leaders in our communities or in government are separated. They no longer are connected with the people such as yourself who are probably in the majority. You know, when you take a look at the average income, it's pretty low. And those taxes do affect you more adversely than they would affect us in these positions. You're spot-on. When you turn anything over to an authority, right, then it's out of the elected official's control. You can't blame the elected officials because they don't have the power to make those changes other than appointments. So, I agree with all your concerns. I've seen some preliminary numbers where huge... I mean, think about rain tax. We're taxing people for rain coming down on their properties. How absurd. How absurd? This is... What is it next? The sun? Okay, we have some major problems here and they're not going to get fixed that way. Not in my opinion, anyway. Do we need to... Do we need to try to improve some of the sediment erosion and the nitrates and the phosphates? Yes. But we also have to be told, where are they? At which benchmark are... Did we meet their expectations? We're not being told that. Not at all. And this is just the start. There will be some companies out there that'll pay $20,000 a quarter for this rain tax. Lot of money. I don't care who you are. And then, those services and goods will be passed down to you. So, yes, I applaud you for bringing this up. And I... There again, you know, there's going to be some tough decisions that have to be made. And they're trying their best, but boy, once you get out of the hands of an elected official, you have no control.
Am I allowed to reply? You're right. The only thing elected officials can do is replace the people on those boards or eliminate the authorities that they've created and take it back in and say, I'm going to take control of this. I'm going to take responsibility of it. Y'all have a lot of work. I get that, that you need to have people, just like you have the different departments and county government, that handle things for you. You couldn't... You know, three of you couldn't run everything in the county all by yourself. You know, it'd be nice, but truth is... But these people, you know, when you have absolutely no say in what they are... And now, I think Rick and Tony, I don't know that Jack knows, but I mow lawns for elderly people. I mow lawns for elderly people that get $700 a month on social security. By the time you pay your city taxes, by the time you pay for your Part B medical, by the time you pay, you know, your regular utilities, some of these people don't have that extra $15 a month. You know, I mean, they honestly just don't. And sure, maybe I'll get an extra hour or two here and there at work. But these people are in their 70s and 80s. They're not working. They can't work, you know? And it breaks my heart to see people that least can afford it. You know, and I know you got a formula and blah, 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 but somehow, there has to be a consideration made for those that honestly, truthfully can't afford it. How that's done, I don't know. Maybe there's a form or some kind of exemption or something that, you know, income qualified or, I don't know, in DC, they like to say means-tested, you know? But somehow, some way, there has to be a better way. And technically, after the meeting, I want to talk to Rick about some of this too and possibly Tony. I don't know if you, Jack, would want to, but somehow, you know, we got to make it where people weren't forced out of their homes.
Yeah. You know, Keith, it's interesting that we had the conversation about the minimum wage and this. I know there's a lot of economic thought that if we raise the minimum wage, we're going to increase automation and so forth. But most of the people that you know who are making... Who have social security of $700, they have that because they made minimum wage. Because what you get in social security is related to how much you were paid. So, if you're paid $80,000 a year, social security payment is higher. If you're making... If you have a social security payment of $7, you may have worked a minimum wage job your whole life. And as difficult as it is for us sometimes to worry that automation is going to take over... I mean, they're talking about McDonald's now, just automating it. Some of that automation is going to happen regardless of the minimum wage because machines don't call in sick, machines don't have automobile accidents, machines don't get cancer and be out of work. And I guess... And not to say that we should raise the minimum wage and have all of your money go to pay this tax. But I think that, for me as an elected official, I would support raising the minimum wage because I think that at a certain level, people need a certain amount to live. And unfortunately, all those people at the minimum wage don't have the bargaining power of either being in a union or of having such an incredibly high skill that they can say, you know, like a lawyer or an accountant or someone who does some skill in IS, that they're going to go find another job. But in terms of this also, we had a meeting up there by the church where Graffias Run is. And what's happened is if you look at our... You know the flooding that happened in Texas a couple of years back? Part of that is that what used to be dirt is now paved over parking lots. The rainwater has nowhere to go. Even remember a couple of years back when Park Avenue flooded? I remember I was in the state legislature, could... Came to my office because they lost their furnaces on Park Avenue because all the sewers backed up. But all of Graff... That whole... All the roads that we've built, all the parking lots, the water has nowhere to go. So, at a certain point, I think we have to recognize that our transformation from an agricultural society to an industrial society has created a landscape that no longer allows nature to do what it wants to do, which is return to the earth. The water wants to return. And I get it. I appreciate this. And I know we've talked about the concern of having an authority. But somehow, we have to come up with it. And I'm going to throw a very, very... I think that we have to begin to reevaluate at a national level where we put our resources. We've been tied up in a war in Afghanistan for 20 years. This year's military budget is $715 billion. I absolutely support our military. I support our veterans. At a certain point, we have to ask ourselves that we've spent probably, they say, $6 trillion in the Middle East in the last 20 years. At least 3 trillion, right? Possibly 6 trillion. At a certain point, we have to say to ourselves, is what we're doing in the best interest of ourselves when people like yourself and others who are trying to live on $700? So, I only ask you to think about those things. It doesn't mean that... Listen, we've talked about this a lot. How do we deal with this? You know, do we turn it over to an authority? We don't want... We don't want people who are not responsive. But somehow, we have to do something with the water. It's the same thing with the flooding. And I know it's not popular to talk about the military expenditures, but at a certain point, we have to... We have to look at it and say, what's it doing? Our education system, you know, our ability to survive, so... That does... I want to talk to you about this and we have to figure out a way. And Commissioner McCurnan said it. It might be good for you to read it to City Council.
You brought up social security. A few years ago, social security recipients got a huge increase, 1.7. The governor of this state and all the elected officials got a 2.2%. It's only half a percent. But say you retired at 70 and you got enough to get by and maybe a trip to a nice restaurant once a month. But after 10 years, that half a percent each year starts snowballing. Now, you're 80, 90. Or like the lady I used to mow for 96, that little half a percent over 20 years adds up. And so, it becomes where these people, you know... People look at me like I'm crazy because I still have two people that I charge $5 for mowing their lawns. You know, when y'all were teenagers, you probably got $5 for mowing somebody's lawn.
$5? You must think we're young.
Well, y'all seem young, but...
Yeah, no, we ain't young.
You know? And, you know, you bring up the water and the flooding on Park Avenue and Graffias Run. Take a drive outside of Williamsport, up there, up Blooming Grove Road. Get up where you can take a ride and go up that hill and see all the beautiful McMansions with their well-manicured lawns that don't hold squat for rainwater like when it was a farmer's field or wildlife. So, what happens is when you have a thunderstorm, you get a lot of runoff instantly. And I'm sure they met all the requirements, but there should have been retention ponds that hold some of the water and slowly release it instead of it coming down, you know, like a broken dam, you know?
That's where our conservation district comes in. And I... No, you're right.
I'm going to just throw in my two cents on this. Hopefully, the levy in the next... In the next 30 days, we'll get some good news on some levy funding. I think part of the... But we know, and I'm almost... I've learned over the last four years, maybe the pitfalls of authorities. But I think at the same time, I think there's a balance there because sometimes, you know, you look at some of these problems that we have, maybe government officials haven't taken the necessary steps to try to prevent them because they're concerned about if they do take those steps, they could lose their jobs. And, you know, the authority kicks in where, you know, you can give that responsibility to an authority and they should, knowing that they're not going to be voted out of office, they should do what's right to solve the problem for the long term. And if they don't do what's right, then the elected officials have to step in and remove the people and make sure the right people are in there. You know, with the levy, we've had this levy out there for 60, 70 years and nothing was ever set aside for it. And, you know, for the long-term maintenance and care and protection of the community. So, you know, now it comes home to roost and we've got to take care of that. Now, we have to think about the long term and what's going to be the solution to maintaining that in the future and having the funds available to do it. You know, when we looked at the city of Sunbury, you know, I think they charge like $3.50 a park... and fifty cents a parcel down there to make sure that they've got a pool of money to take care of within the future. And, you know, it would be great if you can do things like that that are so small that provide a long-term benefit. And, you know, hopefully, we can get out of the levy repairs at a very low price, but then we have to think to a long-term solution. We can't just let it go for another fifty years because that was part of the agreement we made with Senator Yaw was, you know, that we would try to come up with a long-term solution. And I, I think, you know, the next, the next board commissioners is going to have to come up with some sort of plan, I guess, in, in concert with the city and the other municipalities to, you know, to have a solution for that.
It's really about what do we do to fund infrastructure? And the reason I mentioned the seven hundred and fifty billion at the federal level is because that money could be spent on infra, some of it could be spent on infrastructure. Yesterday, we had a Watts meeting, the Williamsport Area Transportation Study. We have at least thirty million dollars of embankment slides. You know Warrensville Road is closed off, right, from a certain portion when you try to go from Eldred Township in? Well, these are embankment slides that happen because of excessive rain and weather conditions. And there's literally no money anywhere in the state to fix these. I mean, not just our county, statewide, we have these. And, I mean, actually, yesterday, when I, when I raised about, and, and it's not because of anything that Pendot doesn't wanna do or anyone doesn't wanna do, it's just that the emergency, the amount of emergency funds that has been needed has, keeps going up and up and up. You know, if you don't, if you don't fix the hole in your roof, the first time you get a little bit of water in the attic, the next time you get a little bit of water coming to the second floor, before you know it, it's raining in your kitchen. Right? And that's the same thing here. It's like we have met, we have serious infrastructure problems in our road. That's why I'm so proud of the fact that we enacted the bridge bundling program that's gonna fix seventeen bridges at a very minimal cost of five dollars. And, and I almost wish the legislature would, would do more things like that to give us the ability to take a little bit of money and leverage it by making the payments on the bond. We borrowed seven million dollars, but that money is gonna pay the bond. But, but it's, it's a problem. We've got, what you said is true, we gotta come up with a way to fix the, fund fixing the levy.
I find it amusing that you bring up roads and infrastructure. Voters approved raising the gasoline tax to fix the road.
Yes.
But then half of it was taken to pay for the state police.
Yeah.
Well, then let's just get rid of the state police because obviously, we didn't have them before that gas tax. And it always has bothered me when, you know, the government says, we need to do this to fix your road. But then they take half the money for not fixing the roads, and then we're in the situation where part of Warrensville Road, you said, is closed off because we don't have the money to send the bulldozer out to scoop the dirt out the way or whatever it is to, you know, open it back up.
Yeah, it's really engineering it. When the road is too close to the creek, you have to literally re-engineer it. But no, you raise a good point. I mean, there was lots of money raised. It was God and state police and. Thank you.
Sorry to keep y'all so long, but, you know, all these things, I pay attention to, you know?
Any other public comment this time? There being none, the next meeting will be Thursday at ten AM. Thank you.